We would like to welcome you out to our public hearing this morning. We're delighted to be here in Ephraim. And my name is Rex Faeser. I'm the Chair of the Commission. And with me today, I have four other Commissioners. We would like to excuse Commissioners Lyle Hilliard and Commissioner Bill Thorne, who have other commitments that precluded them from joining us this morning. On my right, we have Commissioner Christine Durham and Commissioner Jeff Baker. Commissioner Durham was appointed by the Democrats in the legislature. Commissioner Baker is an independent who was appointed by the Republicans. Commissioner Bishop was appointed by the Republicans. And Commissioner Hale was appointed by the Republicans. And so, let me try that again. Commissioner Hale was appointed by the Democrats. My mind was already racing to not leave out Commissioner Hilliard, who was appointed by the Republicans. And Commissioner Thorne is an independent who was appointed by the Democrats. And so, the Commission has three members appointed by the Republicans, three members appointed by the Democrats, and then I was appointed by the Governor. And we'd like to share with you a little bit about kind of the process that we're going through and give you an overview of how redistricting, from our perspective, works. In 2018, the voters passed the initiative that resulted in the creation of the Independent Redistricting Commission. And then with some further compromises with legislature, the Commission became an advisory commission. And so, we will submit our final maps to the legislature on November 1st. But the legislature has the ultimate responsibility to choose the maps. And so, our task is we travel around the state and draw maps is to gain as much input and perspective as we can from the public. So that reminds me, this is being broadcast on YouTube. And so, what you heard was the sound going out on the YouTube channel. And that's actually one of the things that we're trying to be very transparent as we go through this process, that not only broadcasting our public meetings, but also the map drawing sessions that we participate in, we also broadcast. And so, the Commission has a process by which we're trying to make maps that represent the interests of the citizens. But we don't know everything about the whole state, which is why it's so critical that we get feedback from folks like you to help us understand your communities and your perspectives and your priorities. We have a number of criteria that drive our decision-making. And the first and foremost criteria comes from the constitutional mandate that every person be treated equally. And it has come to be known as the one person, one vote rule. And as a result, every district that we create has to have essentially equal population. And so, for the congressional districts, that means that each of the four congressional districts has to have a population of about 817,904. Now, we do have the ability to have some small deviations there. But we're trying to keep that small, in part because of the mandate that comes from the Constitution, but also because of the priorities that the Legislative Redistricting Commission has established. We want to make sure that our maps meet the expectations that they have as well. Now, for the state senate, the size of a district is 112,814. Or a state house district is 43,622. And then for the state school board, it's 218,108. So essentially, you take the total population of Utah, which is about 3.2 billion, and you divide it by the number of districts. And that's how you get that ideal population number. And that is the first and foremost criteria that drives our decision-making. And so, even if we would like to do something else, we have to keep that one in mind, no matter what the other criteria that we have are. Now, additional criteria that we have are things like contiguity. That all areas of a district have to be touching each other. So if, for example, we know that here here in the county, I just had the number, we've got about 28,000 people. And if they're, in order to get to the 43,000 necessary for a house district, that means we have to have roughly another, what, 13, 15,000 people, something like that. If we could find a place that had exactly 15,000 people on the other side of the state, we couldn't put those two areas together. We have to have an area that's adjacent to the county to be able to do that. Now, that also means that when we look at, for example, Sevier and San Peak County, which are next to each other, there's a total of 49,000 between the two counties, which means that there's too many to have just one house district between the two. And so, that results in us having to split up, even though our preference, one of our criterias, is to try and keep cities and counties whole. But there are going to be times where because of the number requirement, that we're going to have to make splits. That's one of the reasons we need your feedback, is to make sure that where we make a division, it makes sense to you as a community. We've heard a number of times, as we've gone out to communities, that they don't like where the split happened last time. And our goal is to please everybody, but I've been told that's not possible. But we're going to probably have, everybody, when they look at some part of the map, will find something that they dislike. But we won't know unless you tell us. Another criteria that we have is compactness. Now, again, in Utah, we're a relatively large geography state that has a population dispersed in a very unequal way. The vast majority of people live along the Wasatch Front. It's about 70% of the population, give or take. And the rest of the population is then scattered across the broad expanse of Utah. Now, in order to get to the 800,000 people, that means that our districts, some of them, aren't going to be able to be really as small and tight, although that's our goal. And so, we may have to trade off on some of these criteria in order to balance out. So in order to get the first criteria of equal population, that may mean that some of our districts have to be a little bit bigger. But that's part of the trade-off that we go through as we're making mapping decisions. We've also been asked to look at things like geographic boundaries. So if there's a river that we could use as a boundary, if that makes sense, if there's a highway, a mountain range, things that kind of make logical sense from a geographical perspective, we've been asked to look at those as a possible boundary line. We've also been asked to look at the course of prior districts. So that means that if you look at the districts as they were established 10 years ago, we've been asked to try and pay attention to those. Now, the challenge is that as Utah has grown, and it's grown quite dramatically across a significant part of the state, that means the patterns of population have shifted. And so, we can't lay the exact same boundaries on top of the districts as they existed previously, because the populations are now unequal in those districts. And so, we now have to realign those boundaries as best we can. And that becomes a challenge, because it's kind of like squeezing a balloon in some ways. When you squeeze in one spot, it balloons out in another. And so, moving those district boundaries, you might think that, oh, I've just got to adjust it to pick up another 2,000 people here. Well, that 2,000 people there then sneaks out and causes the boundary to shift even more. And the population growth has been largely concentrated, both in the southern part of the state, in the greater St. George area, and then along the Wasatch Front in northern Utah County and southern Salt Lake County. There are parts of Salt Lake County that have been relatively stagnant. And so, even when we have that kind of population change, it requires us to look at that very carefully. As I mentioned, we've been asked to try and keep cities and counties whole where possible. We've been asked to try and make boundaries agree across types of districts. Although that one is a little bit challenging, where we have 29 senate districts and 75 house districts. 29 isn't divided into 75 in a nice even number. And so, that makes it so that we can't have perfect alignment across the districts. But we want to have some continuity as best we can. Then the last criteria that I want to mention is the purposeful favoring or disfavoring of political entities. So as a Commission, we can't favor or disfavor a political party, a candidate, a potential candidate. And so, as a result, we have chosen as a Commission to not look at political data in our map drawing. And so, when we draw our maps, and you can watch us draw our maps on YouTube, we broadcast those just like we do our public meetings, you can see the conversation that's going on. And the conversation that goes on is largely driven by things like, well, how many people are in that little census block? Because we have to use the geography that the census provides us. And the smallest unit that the census provides us is what is called the census block. And we then use those census blocks to designate an area. And so, if you look at a map and you go, gosh, why is that line so jagged? Especially in rural parts of the state, it's because the census blocks, the word "block" makes it sound like they're neat and compact little squares. The reality is that when you get out, especially in the more rural parts of the state, the census blocks can be quite large, quite odd-shaped. But even in cities, you get odd-shaped blocks that are not all of equal size. And so, it's not as if there's a requirement that every census block have an equal population. No, the census blocks were devised by the Census Bureau, and they just capture whatever population is in them. The one other criteria that we have been asked to look at is what we call "communities of interest." And communities of interest is an interesting criteria, in part, because, well, we have a definition that drives us, that a community of interest is a contiguous geographical area where people share interests. That may be economic interest, it could be social interest, it could be cultural interest. And so, it's an area where people share an interest. Now, the challenge is, depending on what that interest is, people may draw a very different boundary to that area. So if somebody's looking at the watershed as their interest, they'll draw a very different boundary than if they're looking at the economic center of the San Peak County, for example. And we want people to share those communities of interest with us, because we've been asked to look at it. But again, in looking at those, we have some strategic ways. We ask people to map those out. They can do that either online, and our staff will talk about how you can do that online in a few minutes. Or you can literally draw it out by hand. And our staff, again, our staff, Joey here, gets the task of compiling all those and feeding them into the software so that we can analyze it. And we create the maps that allow us to see where people have commonly defined these communities of interest. And it really is a fairly sophisticated process that, again, Commissioner Baker, who's a GIS expert, helped us figure out how to do. Oh, thank you. And so, as we kind of look at all of this, our task is to get a set of maps drawn. And to do that, we've divided up into map drawing teams. And so, we have three map drawing teams. Each team has members that were appointed by the Republicans and Democrats. And as a result, we're trying to be as cooperative and as un-driven by politics, as nonpartisan as we possibly can. And so, that has been an important strategy that we have used that has been different from what some other Commissions around the country have done, where they've divided up into partisan teams and then started arguing. We made a decision very early on that we wanted to be a cooperative Commission, and that we didn't want to have politics driving what we were doing. We wanted the input from the public and the data to drive what we were doing. And so, what we would like to do now is, I would like to ask, we have Sandy Neal, who's the San Peak County Clerk, who's with us. And I didn't warn you about this, Sandy. So but we're going to open it up in a moment to everybody to make some public comments if they would like to. But as our only official designation from a local jurisdiction, if you would like to make a few words, we would welcome that at this point.
Real quick, I dealt with last 10 years' worth. I got to be part of and redistricted for the county. And then the 10 year before, I came on when we had that one in place. It improved. With the last one, that first one, we had three house districts in our little county, and it's jigjagged and just moved all through the county. Wound up with precincts with like 15 voters. Because of the different things we have to cover on the ballot, they had their own precinct. And when I got elected, one of the really small precincts by Gunnison, where I live, all of the ones who voted, voted for me. So if I wanted to, I could go see who voted in that election from that precinct and call them up and thank them for their vote, because it was all the same. Had one of them not, we'd never know who, and that's okay. And I never have, to this day, looked that up to see who it was. But that's wrong. That's wrong to have that small of a precinct. But we were stuck with it by the way things had been redistricted. And that happened in several places throughout the county. We were just stuck with what it was. So when we did it the last time, they cut up a tiny chunk in the corner of our county in Axale. And we wound up with a 40, 30 or 40-person precinct because of that. And I kept calling and kept trying to find a way that they could rethink that. Not only small, easy to tell how people voted if you start looking at things, but also it's another ballot style. And a ballot style costs money. Each ballot style, we have to pay to the company that we do our elections through for each one. And for each person on the ballot, even though they're on the other ballots, we still pay over and over again. And for such a small group. So I'm hoping it'll be fun to see the maps. I haven't even looked at them yet to see and see what they're coming up with. But as few divisions that they can make would be very helpful. And we do a lot of our precincts by section and township. And so, that first year, it just zigzagged, altered, and it started. We address by section and township. If you live outside of town, easy to know which precinct they're in by their address than to know that we placed it in the right place. So it'll be interesting to see what's been put together.
First of all, thank you very much for joining us. Thank you for your perspective. And I know Commissioner Durham would like to share some thoughts.
I just wanted to mention one thing. Thank you very much. It's really educational to hear from you from your perspective. But I wanted to let you know that I'm on a mapping team with Commissioner Baker, and he is always mentioning precincts.
Very good.
I do mapping for Davis County, and that was around 10 years ago. When the whole statewide thing, it was not just San Pete County, it was statewide. The legislature ended up having to make 411 corrections for that very, very exact purpose, so that the counties could properly carry out their precincting without having to make precincts of 10 people or one squirrel or whatever it might be. And I think the smallest precinct we would have had, had the corrections not been made, was literally the size of the palm of my hand, geographically. So if we laid it down, traced around it, that would have become a legal precinct. But the corrections had to be made. It stymied the whole process for two months, quite severely. So yes, believe me, I am watching the lines very closely.
I currently have a precinct with zero voters. So if somebody were to build there, they would be a lone person precinct. And I called and just begged them, just follow this section line through that point right there, and we won't have that problem. But they wouldn't do it. They said that's the things that they use when they...
We can blame it on the Census Bureau, probably.
Yeah, that's what I was like, but that's their lines. I have another question. When I'm redistricting, I'm to go by people and not registered voters. I have a prison in our little county that holds a lot of people. They have enough to have a school board. But nobody that lives at the prison can vote. But they are a school board's size. Is there, have they changed anything yet that allows you to? No? So that's awkward for us to have one really large, people-wise, school board district, and then voter-wise, quite small.
Yeah, and that really is a question on how to manage that for legal counsel. And while we're very sympathetic to that, because there are other parts of the state that have the very same issue, the largest census block in the state in terms of population is the prison in Draper. And so, the very same kind of issue that you're facing. While we can't ignore those people, even their voting restrictions might be in place, it does create, as you say, some real challenges for you at the local level. And we encourage you to seek legal counsel as you figure that out.
No, we recognize that's a problem. Everybody does. And it's not just in prison. You have the same problem with Hill Air Force Base. You've got a college here, and you have a lot of kids who register and count there, but probably are not necessarily voting there. So and actually, if you have a community that has a whole bunch of kids, you've got people there that count for this, but they're not going to be voting. So it's one of those conundrums that is across the entire state. And I don't know if there's really a good solution to any of those situations. We recognize that.
Yeah, and there have been some states that have tried to do some other things, such as to take the people in the prison and then reassign them to where they were before they came in. That is very problematic for a whole host of reasons, not the least of which it delays the time in which people can start drawing maps, which we were delayed long enough. And we're grateful that we're able to be drawing now rather than just starting. Well, thank you very much. We really appreciate your perspective. And if there's anything else you would like to add later on in the meeting, feel free to come up again. So I did want to mention the issue of the census that came up. One of the challenges that we have had, and it's not unique to us here in Utah, it's been across the country, is the Census Bureau, because of the pandemic, delayed issuing the data that we use to draw the maps. Normally, that data would be available in around April. But we didn't get that data until essentially late August. And so, it was early September by the time we were able to start drawing maps. And so, that creates a more compact timeframe, not only for us drawing the maps, but also for you as the public in reviewing those maps and commenting on them. And so, we're going to ask our staff to talk about the ways in which you can engage with us and comment on the maps, because all of the maps that we're drawing, and right now, they're draft maps, they're meant for discussion, they're all available on our website. So we have Soraya Maury, if we could have her come up and talk about how people can engage both with our website and with us.
Okay, yeah, so I'll just show you some, we'll show you on the screen, some of the ways that you can help us out. So as Chair thinks, one of the ways is looking at the graphed map that they've been working on. And you'll, you can put on to the text of that. And I think this is the easiest way that you can help, because their maps are already been drawn. And you can look at it, you can zoom in, see the line, see the street. You can zoom into your house and just see where the line has been drawn. And then on the left, you'd be able to let us know who you are, where you're commenting from, and you'll provide us with all about the map. What's good about it, what's bad about it. And so then, that just allows the Commissioners to see what they've been working on, what they've done, and make changes.
And Soraya, if I could just reiterate again, that these are draft maps. So these are not the maps that we're putting forward ultimately to the Commission. What we want is, we want your feedback. We want to know what we've got right, what we don't have right, so that we can try and correct that. But please.
If I wanted to make a comment on a specific area, is there some kind of coordinate that I could, you know, say, well, my concern is with this, you know, this coordinate here. Are the maps designed that way so that I could zoom into my town and make a comment specifically about an area?
You could probably just use your city, just identify your city, and we...
So you can zoom all the way into the house?
Yeah.
So if you let us know where you're coming from, if you really want us to know exactly what we've been looking at and the line you're looking at, you could...
Well, no, but Sandy mentioned Axale. You know, is there going to be a line going through the middle of Axale? And if we saw that and wanted to comment on that, we'd have to be able to tell you that.
Yeah, and so you can see that on the map. And then in the public comment form, Joey, if you'll scroll down on the comment form, there is a place there at the bottom. So one, you can tell us where you're from, but there's a place there on the bottom. If you were to say, no, you're splitting Axale again, don't do that. And then it might be helpful for those of us who don't know where Axale is, for you to say, that's in Gunnison or something of that nature.
Okay, thank you.
That's a really good way. You can see all of the maps that they drafted. Even have some maps that the public has drawn. Yeah, it's the old public, the public map. Yeah, public division, so you can even see maps that the public has drawn. That's kind of cool to get even that kind of a perspective. And so, that's one way, I think, probably the easiest way. But there are other ways that you can give your feedback. You can go back to our site, go to participate and help comment. You'll have two ways within Map Your Community. And so, that will be just drawing an area around a community that's important to you. And that could be you go to the same church or just your neighborhood. Just those are, those are types of communities that interest. Let us know why you think it should be packed together. That's one way to leave us feedback. And there's a video on that first page that shows you how it can be a little help. If you really want to get into mapping, you can go to Map That's Made in Utah. And this gives you some information on how to do it. And then there's a video on how to do it. It's a little more complicated, but if you are tipsy and want to get into that, you can do that. And then the other ways are, you can email us at uirccomments@utah.edu and let us know. Or you can go to, yeah, there's the email, and let us know. Another way, if you wanted to leave us a comment here today, we have some papers... Um another way, if you wanted to leave us a comment here today, we have some papers outside and you can write down some comments. Uh look, and we have the current districts and you can let us know maybe what's wrong with it or what you like about it. And if you want to write it down. So these are some ways that you can give your input. We, we just, it's really helpful because you don't know everything in front of the state. You hear what, what people think and what's going on in their area. Oh, and another thing you can do, if you go to comment, you can see all the comments that have been submitted and put those up. So you know that you are receiving them and, and making sure that everybody has access to them, that the commissioners have access. Um and then if you go up, we talked about how we've been collecting the community's interest. Good view, need some interest this weekend, and go look at what people have submitted. And so you see, maybe if, if it's already been submitted, what you would need to, to send us. Um and we have broken up by the type of communities that are, you know, national, regional, government. We have all, all sorts of needs for that.
Yeah, when a person submits their version of the map that they would like, they put one together, is it accepted if the numbers don't meet?
So the, the, the numbers, you have to meet the general thresholds. The general threshold that we have listed for the, for the public maps are our statutory thresholds, I believe. And, and, and those thresholds are all online so people can see. But, but we want those maps to be useful to us and, and so they do need to, to meet those targets.
So we can pick one that we really liked and we're safe knowing that the numbers are there.
That's right, that's right.
It won't let you submit the map unless the numbers meet the threshold.
Unless it does.
Yeah. So the numbers do not have to be exact, but there's a range. And so you have to build a district that has a population that falls within the range of acceptability. If it's outside, the system will not accept it. It'll let you know, um try again, basically.
Another question? Yeah?
Um the one question I would have is that we, we have the opportunity to give you feedback on this. And being somewhat uneducated in the whole process, is there a way that we can submit questions and get answers? Or is that just too big of a task?
No, if you email us at the UIRC comment@utah.gov, we respond to those within twenty-four, forty-eight hours.
Thank you.
Please, Commissioner Bishop.
If, if I could also, as you all gave a chance to talk here. Um one of the issues we want to deal with is what we deal with, the numbers that are, are there. Sampeach County has twenty-eight thousand. I think Sevier has about twenty-one thousand. Those are too big for a house district, but they're too small for a district by themselves. And they're, they're too small for a senate, state senate district. So the question has to be, with whom would you rather be combined when you do that? So you can go west to Juab, has about eleven thousand, or Millard, and go south to, through Sevier, through DePaiute and Wayne, or you can go east to Emery, which has about nine thousand, or Carbon, which has about twenty. Or up to Utah County, in which case, good luck. But, but the issue at hand right now is Sevier and Sampeach have got to be connected with somebody else. Where would you like to see that connection take place? And that really is the biggest question that we have to face here is what are your wishes in that regard? And that's the biggest question, as you've talked to us today. If you can tell us which direction we should do, where the connections would be, that would be extremely helpful.
So we can't be, Sevier and Sampeach can be connected at this point?
Well, you, you could be combined in a house seat, but not completely. You, you, you'd have to split off part of one of the two counties.
So the two together have forty-nine, you need forty-three for a house seat. So you'd have to give something up or go in one of the other directions and have, you know, Sampeach with somebody else and Sevier with somebody else.
And then for the senate seat, you need a hundred and twelve thousand. Uh and so the two combined, again, you're forty-nine thousand. So you're now about seventy thousand short, you know, you give, give or take a couple of full.
Yeah, and right now you have like nine, nine counties that are in your state senate seat. So it goes, actually, it looks like it goes up into Utah County a little bit, Juab down to Kane is the state senate seat.
All right, yeah. Gordon, if we can have you.
Yeah, just, just briefly, the, the format of this, we have about five minutes for people to give their comments. But we need very little and making sure that you get it, tell it, you want to. And afterwards, we have an open house. You can be with any of our technical staff, see the program, understand it, and then anything you have. So feel free to use all the time of the budget here.
So, and, and again, I, I want to reiterate that our staff is very willing to, to be helpful. And so if you decide you want to map, uh you, you know, congressional district or, or a state senate or, or even a state house district, and you run into troubles, you can reach out and contact the staff and they'll be happy to, to give you some feedback and guidance on how to, how to make that work. So what we'd like to do at this point is open it up to additional public comment. Um and we're, you know, we're, one, we're a small enough group that we assume that we can be orderly in this process. And so we invite you, if you have some, some questions for the commission, some comments that you would like to, to have us here. And then we'll also be happy to, to engage with you in, in that process. So we invite you to come up and share your thoughts.
Lloyd Call, Sampeach Messenger. And what were the numbers for the school districts again?
Two hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and eight.
Okay, so I, maybe this isn't part of this purview, but, you know, we have in Sampeach County have two school districts. And many times people will say, well, gee, other school districts have far more people than we have. Why don't we just have one school district? Why do we have two? Is that something that has anything to do with what you're doing?
No, that's outside of our purview.
Okay, I was just curious. I, that, that two hundred and eighteen thousand numbers.
It's big, yes.
Huge. Based on what base do I have?
The state school board, yeah.
State board, okay. All right, that's one only question for right now. Thank you.
All right. Other comments, questions? Please.
My name's Kip Hanson with Richfield City. And that does, visiting with Commissioner Bishop, just prior to this meeting, we looked at those numbers. It's kind of surprising, really, somehow what you predicted on how the census comes out. But obviously, we're a pretty natural marriage culturally and economically, a lot of other ways. But one, one big issue that I think we need to consider is, I mean, we're right here in the shadow of Snow College here. Uh with the, you know, they have the two campuses and it's, it's different. I know Utah State University has, you know, their satellite campuses. That's a little different situation than these here. President Cook is the president over Snow College. That campus in Richfield is, is not as much a destination campus as, you know, it's, in fact, as they're looking at that new model for that, it's almost going to circle back, I think, to the old Sevier Valley Tech kind of educational model. Under the purview of, of Snow College here. I guess my point is, is as much as possible, it would be good to have that representation. You know, common, commonality between those and, and realize, I realize part of one county or the other would have to be split one direction to make that happen. But, and I, I'm not here to throw Sampeach County under the bus. But the, the northern end of this county has some economic ties kind of going Utah County direction that way. More so than other parts of the county. We have a situation in our county, quite honestly, the Salina Axthel area. That, that area actually has some economic ties very with, with Emery and Carbon, with the, with the coal mining and those types of things. But we, we, we take, if we take Salina out of that, then we're, we're put, we're splitting that right down the middle between the two counties. So that obviously creates another problem. Of course, that's where you guys make the big money. But anyway, just, I, I guess Snow College, I think, is a unique situation in this regard, even though other institutions of higher education, you know, have more than one campus. But it's, it's kind of the same outfit, if you will, with the, in, in this geography.
Does, do you happen to know like how many kids are at Snow, residents at Snow College?
Uh I should.
Is anyone here?
Hell.
Okay.
I, I know one. My son is here. I, I don't know what those numbers are. I'm.
I don't either.
I think Joey's going to find a mouth for it.
Yeah, there we go.
I can't, this type of information is really useful to us. Uh you know, as we travel to different areas every weekend and get input from, from residents. We go back the next week and we try to tweak our maps or even create new maps with the information we receive. And considering that commonality, you know, between Sampeach and Sevier is really helpful. So thank you.
All right, well, anyway, that's just my thoughts on that. Appreciate your time.
Well, thank you very much.
Um so Snow College has five thousand five hundred and fourteen students with sixty, fifty-nine percent of them being full.
Okay, thank you. Other, you know, public, other comments from the public?
And where are conflicts a couple of years?
Well, and, and, and again, that's, it's a terrific perspective to help us. Uh i- i- if there are communities where you go, we just don't fit with Delta or we don't fit with, you know, whomever. Uh that's helpful for us to, to know as, as well. Besides the football rivalry.
Yeah, the most common one I can think of is that Sampeach County may have a resentment with having a representation over in Neefi. So because of the way that the districts are set up, that, oh man, you know, we can't get somebody from Sampeach elected, but they, you know, they keep electing somebody from Neefi.
Yeah.
Of course, his predecessor was Monroe. Thought I might say that. Involved them, excellent senators.
It's your house member, isn't it?
Yes.
There were two commissioners running for that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I was thinking about the Senate, you know, Senator, but.
Is there a natural connection between Neefi and Sampeach? Or, or Millard and Sampeach?
Northern Sampeach and Neefi certainly. Mount Pleasant, Fairview, Godfrey, Wayles, all have, all have much more, much more connected to Neefi.
That's an easy drive across.
It is.
Well, that was my thinking again to that part of the set. Sampeach County has a natural fit kind of going west or north and northern west tracks. That may, may chunk the rest of the county up in Sevier, make something workable.
And that area plus Neefi does have a connection culturally with Utah County. Okay.
Thank you. Please, Commissioner Hill.
Yes, I'm just curious. Um so as you know, we'll be submitting three maps of each type. And Chair Facer talked to you about the types of maps we'll be submitting to the legislature. And those are the senate and house maps, the state school board, and also the congressional. And we would love to get some feedback from you too about the congressional districts. If you have any thoughts about how those are drawn, please let us, let us hear them today.
One of the issues around the congressional maps that we've been grappling with and have heard, heard about as we travel the state is, is the way in which you honor the voices of southern Utah and rural areas of Utah, more, more importantly. And the urban issues. I know this is central Utah. I knew that. I knew that the minute I said it. But what, but what I really meant to say was rural Utah. Uh places where there's a lot of farming and ranching and very small populations. And then the more urban areas and, and here you kind of butt up against a number of those areas. But if you have any thoughts about how best the congressional districts specifically should function. There's, you know, there's a discussion about whether it's better to keep the rural voices together in a, in, obviously in very large districts because of the numbers. Or whether it's better to have congressional districts that mix urban and rural areas in a single district. So if anybody has any thoughts on that, it would be useful.
And in addition to that as well, Sampeach County is divided between two congressional districts. And that's.
That's, there's four congressional districts, right?
Yeah, total, yes.
Our little county has to have two representatives. And that's not always a good thing. When we were divided with our um other representatives, we had three. And the lines swirled through the county. One of the representatives came into town on the day of the commission meeting to meet with somebody at a restaurant. Commissioners, attorney and I happened to be there. He had no idea who they were and he was representing us. Somebody says, you guys are lucky. You've got three people representing you. This guy was clueless to even think, I'm going to the county seat. I ought to see when they meet and make it on that day. Boy, made it on that day.
Those were three state representatives, so?
These were state.
Yeah.
Okay, we're, we're talking Congress.
But Congress, yeah, the fact that we're split in half. If there's twenty-nine counties, how come our county has to split? I'd like to see a map that keeps us together.
Joey, can we look at the current congressional?
I like the split. As far as splits go, if we have to make a split, that's right on the North Sampeach and South Sampeach School District. Um I like that, but I don't like that we have to with a whole state with so many people that hit their own. And then our little county has to be split. I don't know, anyway.
Actually, Joey, can you go back to the current?
This is the current.
On the.
This is the current. So this is the current congressional district map.
Right, and I read that right at a glance, we're split again.
So that's on the school district lines between North and South Sampeach.
Which helps as far as preparing ballots, because on a school board race year, that split is already there, but.
I know that's one of the things our group looked at as well to see it. Some counties are going to have to be split regardless, just for the numbers and to balance the numbers out.
Right.
But to be actual, a more rural county with a small population, I think we could find another way of doing that as well. And so one of the things I know some of these groups are looking at is making sure that Sampeach would be whole.
So that's, that's the split. It looks like, pretty sure that's on the school district line. But.
Yeah, you want to zoom in a little tighter, Joey?
Do you all have easy access to go east into Carbon or Emery? I mean, just to travel. I, I realize going from Mount Pleasant over to Neefi, it's not that hard.
Three main roads go south to Salina on Seventy, go up over Fairview Canyon, which is seasonally challenged. Go up and around on Six. So there's three main roads that we can use to get over there, over the mountain range.
Oh, so, okay, you'd have to go down to Seventy to get over.
Seventy on Salina, go up to.
Or to Spanish Fork and then.
Or over, or take the challenge over Fairview Canyon.
That's not an easy commute.
It's not.
Okay.
Are there other thoughts that you all have? Because it was a very useful conversation for us that, one, you're paying attention to where the splits happen. But to see kind of how you react to those as, as well. But, but what ideas you have for who would you, you know, fit with, as Commissioner Bishop has mentioned, is, is very useful to us.
So if you assume the Alba would fit. Um yeah, we got a choice, going east or west, or just directly below us would provide us with Sevier County. Um and then District Four would need to find a little bit more somewhere to add to them.
So if District, a chunk of District Four that is now basically North Sampeach, that population, did we?
that population did we picked up from some other area, that's what we're looking at.
If we do the numbers.
Yeah, although these are the old maps, and so the numbers are quite out of balance here.
You should know that all three, first, second, and third districts are, are all.
Under.
Short, yeah, they're all under. The fourth district is way over. So the fourth district is the one that has the most growth in it, and there has to be some arrangements. But once again, if you're connecting Sam Pete together into one district, you're gonna have to take Sam Pete from somebody else that right now is also under. So you're gonna, you're gonna have to play around with some of those numbers to get there.
And, and also, you know, we're looking at the current map, and actually, the maps that have been drawn are, you know, some have just kind of riffed off this current map, but others have just started from scratch and, and have all sorts of different types of configurations. So, so, so we don't have to stick with this particular map and just make, you know, little tweaks to it. We can start with a clean slate.
And the population changes are significant enough that we pretty much have to.
Yes.
Yeah, so it's, it's an interesting balance, as we try and balance, trying to keep the cores. And, and in some ways, even if we start from scratch, you still see a lot of overlays in the areas that were once together. But it, it clearly is a challenge when in one, two, and three, we have not enough people, and in four, we have too many people. And so you've got to be fanning those out, and doing it in ways that make sense and is connected, and all of those kinds of things. So, other questions that you have? Please.
I'm curious, lately, there have been some news in our local paper about the growth that's happening in our area. Are those types of things weighed into this sort of projected growth?
So unfortunately, we cannot use projected growth in determining the actual numbers in the districts. We have to use the 2020 census data. But what we, what we can do is if you, if you say, hey, we know that it's going to be a subdivision that's going to be over here, so when you're drawing the boundary, make sure you capture that with the rest of the city, or something like that. That kind of thing, we can do. And we've heard that from a few communities that have said, oh, we, we know that this area that is being developed is more like our community, so try and keep them with us. Now, we still have to use the 2020 population numbers, but if there are things like that in the community that you know about, we can take that into consideration.
Yeah, I just have a thought as we're looking at these numbers here, after I made my passionate plea to keep Sam Pete and Sevier married up. I can think of a possible, pretty good second marriage, perhaps. I, I don't know what the total numbers would be in Paiute and Wayne. My guess is together, Paiute and Wayne still would not make up a deficient with Sevier County altogether. We'd still be short. But obviously, there's a lot of commonality in those three counties. In many ways, economically, they're kind of one big, big county. A lot of, lot of things, but, but I don't think that would, those three together still wouldn't make that forty-six thousand number. I would, I would think so.
No, we'd still be short.
So, anyway, but, but those are, those are a very natural fit.
But that's good to know as well, because right now, in the state senate seat, we all have.
Right.
You do have Paiute, Wayne, and Garfield and Kane, and then you go over to Millard and.
And Garfield and Kane likewise has a much commonality, that they've always shared one county extension agent, things like that. Those counties kind of are, you know, twins also, so those, you know, those make a good fit, keep those two together for sure as well.
Other thoughts?
Well, I hate to bring up really weird old stuff, but Sam Pete and Emery County have had feuds over water for centuries, almost. And I don't know that putting Emery but North Sam Pete would be a good idea anyway you just sliced it.
Actually, that is good to know, especially because water feuds probably are the most significant issue. That's the only reason there is a latent city, because they broke up from Cadenceville over a water issue, so. That's why.
Those were deep, so to speak.
That's why Daggett County exists, it was over a water issue as well, so. Those are good things to know.
Sam Pete County has been saying for about eighty years now that Emery owes us some water. Yeah, we said all the water, they all done. If I'm like over there, I make sure, go somewhere plus the toilet.
Thank you. Please, Commissioner.
I have a question, so Lloyd, you're with the messenger.
Yes.
So tell us how you would suggest or encourage others in Sam Pete and surrounding counties to get involved in this process.
Well, I, I think that we're gonna write a story about the mapping and how that that's probably the best way to do it, from what you've told me. Certainly, if you look at it, you know, I'm looking at the map and I'm looking at Juat County. Well, Juat County is already in District Four, or at least the Neefi chunk of it. And so there isn't anything to be gained by adding any more of Juat County to District Four. Or, you know, if you tried to isolate North Sam Pete over in Emery, of course, I'd give them an opinion on that. But, for example, we have, we're going to have shortly two temples within six miles of each other. And I know religion does not enter into these deliberations at all, but certainly, Ephraim would want to be a congruous piece. I'm sure that nobody in Ephraim would want to have a district split, split between Mantai and Ephraim. Where you have a temple in Mantai, the temple in Ephraim. So, just sorry to bring it up, but there it is. I, I think Mantai and Ephraim definitely should not have a split in between them. Other than that, if people have that kind of opinion or something else, I think economic conditions is probably the best thing that I would want to have, see as a group. If you have a group of counties that are facing similar droughts or similar environmental challenges, that would be the way to kind of put yourself together if you can. The whole industry has to do that.
In our community of interest data that we're putting together, a religious community is actually one of the categories that we do have, where people can draw a boundary around what they feel represents a religious region, so to speak. So, yeah, so we do consider that. And it would be, I never would presume to tell a journalist, tell a story, but it would be helpful if the story included the information that's available on our website and the opportunity to both construct maps and to comment on maps and to just offer advice on maps.
That will be, that will be featured strongly. That's pretty clear. That's what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you, please.
And you said District Four is too big right now.
That's correct.
If Sam Pete pulled out of District Four, that top half of the county, I guess that adds some to District Two, I'm not sure their size right now, but pulling Sam Pete out and just making us all District Two may help with the fours' efforts a little bit. Not sure who does District Two, but.
Joey, can we cycle through several of the congressional proposals?
And I want to say District Four is about sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So what Joey's gonna show you is several proposals, some are created by us and others are submitted by various citizens around the state. So just to give you some ideas of what's been tossed around so far. Every detail, Steve.
Yeah. Yeah, just the amount of touch, we can't hide the public comment form right now, can we, Joey?
Hide what, sir?
The public comment form.
So those two have Sam Pete together.
So this is a congressional map?
Yes.
Yes.
And you could see how different it is from the current map.
So, as Chairman Facer said, just realize, these are all ideas that have been thrown out there. There is, none of these are the ones that we will necessarily be giving to the legislature.
You've only got till November.
November first, yes.
Thank heavens.
So again, your feedback and input is really important to us, because, like I say, it informs how we're going to, you know, tweak these maps or start again, you know, start from the drawing board again. And as we start selecting the maps, which we will present to the legislature on November four, we want to be confident that we've had sufficient public input.
As, as you're looking at those drafts, most of them are keeping Sam Pete together. And what district is different, but they're, they're together. The biggest concern we still have, though, as we're looking at the numbers, is on the state legislative races. Those, just looking at the central part of Utah, and I know, you know, probably one of the best things you would want to have is to be able to elect a state representative from Sam Pete, and probably a state representative from Sevier, that would be the ideal. But to do that, you've got to juggle those numbers around in that position. And that's, that's where the comments you've given us so far are extremely helpful, because, you know, you don't have a whole lot of options on where to go.
So again, we really appreciate the feedback that you've given us. And as you have additional ideas that come to you, don't hesitate to get them to us, either through the email, uirccomments@utah.gov, or through the comment forums on any specific map. We get all of those comments, they come to us, and we actually have a binder. And now that we get to see all of those comments, where people tell us, we really dislike that map and here's why, or we really like it and here's why. Or just any kind of general thoughts that you have, the notion of Richfield's connection with, you know, Snow College is, again, one of those things that I think, even though I, I was aware of that, it hadn't, you know, crossed my mind. And so I really appreciate you bringing that up. Those kinds of comments are very helpful to us. Are there any other public comments that we have? If not, we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion. Are there any other comments that any of the commissioners would like to make? Not hearing any, I will look to a motion to adjourn. All right, the meeting is adjourned, and we encourage you to get with the staff and have a look at the maps if you'd like, get a feel for the software. Again, we really appreciate you taking the time to come and meet with us today.